Good evening, everyone. It being the hour of 6:00 PM on Monday, or Tuesday, rather, September 2nd, 2025. This is the Abington Planning Board meeting. I'm Bruce Hughes, the Chair, and calling this meeting to order. Minutes?
Minutes of July 7th.
Yes.
You should have received those in the packet.
Everybody had a chance to look at them? Someone like to make a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, yeah, that's right, okay. Thanks, sir. No correspondence? Well, we can go right into this. We can do the ZBA agenda.
Do you want to start with the Form A's?
Yeah, let's start with the Form A's. So, we have a Form A application, Parcel A, High Street, Rear, 80 Ashland Street, and 90 Warren.
Okay, so Mr. Chum and Mr. Riley is here on behalf of Larry Trufant?
No.
Town of Abington?
The Parcel A?
Yeah, we're not, we're doing Larry's stuff right now, because that's what I-
Oh, you're doing Larry's stuff, so that's not-
That's what I throw out.
Sorry, that's not Parcel A, High Street.
Nope.
That is-
He just read, yeah.
The Red One. So, what you have in front of you is the two-sheet plan showing the donation of almost 20 acres of land that Mr. Larry Trufant has made, or is making to the town. For those of you who aren't familiar, Strawberry Valley Golf Course used to be owned by Larry's parents. The town bought the golf course, it was about 50 acres in the mid-'80s. Some of the cost of the purchase was funded by a state open-space grant, Open Space and Recreation, so that property is restricted for golf course use, open space use. Larry wanted to donate these additional, let's just call it rounded up, 20 acres, which is out behind his house. He lives on Ashland Street. He has two houses on Ashland, one at 80 and one at 100. Most of the land, let me back up, the house at 100 Ashland Street is owned by the Larry A. Trufant Family Trust. Everything else is owned by the Ashland Street Realty Trust, too. Larry is donating the 20 acres out back that is, connects to the golf course and will thus allow the golf course, in the future, to reconfigure the layout of the course in whatever way they deem fit. We've met many times with the golf course committee. I've met with Larry many times. Town council has reviewed the deed. He had the engineer do the plan, and this is just kind of basically the last step. Town meeting's already approved it, and we just need the two sheets endorsed, so that I can record them at the registry deeds and record the deed to the town. To my knowledge, at least in my lifetime, this is the largest donation of land to the town, at least in six decades that I've been around. And Larry is going to appear before the Board of Selectmen at their September 22nd hearing just to formally present the deed. Any questions, feel free.
But this is what we approved at town meeting, right?
Correct.
This is just all paperwork's in place and-
Correct.
Okay.
Before the board takes any action on the Form A itself, if you are going to approve it, can we vote to waive any of the fees normally associated with this because it is coming to the town?
Would someone like to make that motion?
I've submuted.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Given that you're seeing it on two sheets, I heard, this is what we showed at town meeting. The Dr. Green parcels are the parcels being donated to the town. And then you can see the light of green is existing golf course.
Sean, quick quiz. Who owns Parcel Number 18? Do you know?
I used to, but I don't. I don't. It's mostly, you can see, swampland.
Yeah.
That's out off, I think that, I'm not sure if the house that owns it is on Ashland Street or High Street.
Sean, would they, they'd make the golf course bigger with this acquisition?
Certainly going to have, go from 50 acres to 70 acres roughly. 53.5 acres to about 70, almost 75 acres. Most of Mr. Trufant's land is dry, which gives him some opportunities. I don't want to speak for the golf course, but they're going to look at a few things. Are they just going to keep it as a nine-hole course and make it a longer nine-hole course? I don't think it's enough to make it an 18-hole course, if that's what anyone's thinking out there in cable TV land. But it gives them an opportunity to make some significant upgrades. Of course, as you know, is an income generator for the town and it's been doing very well since the town took over control, and this just creates some other exciting opportunities and more areas for me to lose my ball.
That's where I find the ball. I could be with one.
Legal areas, five ball.
Yes, right.
Maybe you should just give them to Jeff.
So, that's it. This is just the formality of everything we've gone through, through town meetings, gift-giving process.
Any further discussion on this?
So, yeah. What is the ask that we're voting on? Just to join it to the existing course property, or?
Tonight, we're asking just to endorse the Form A plan, which is in two sheets because it's such a large parcel. The town's already voted to accept the gift, but I can't record the deed until I have a plan to record with it.
Right, but it's, the reason this is needed is because it is part of another-
Parcel?
Because, yes, we're subdividing it off of Larry's current land altogether.
Right, okay.
So, this delineates what the boundaries are that the town will own moving forward and the boundaries that Larry will retain moving forward.
Okay.
Frontage requirements would be satisfied by the existing property?
I'm sorry?
The frontage requirements would be satisfied by the existing property?
Yes, so his house at 80 Ashland Street, he's retaining some of the land behind, behind that, which is on the first sheet.
Which one?
So you can see, what's shown is Lot C and Lot 5. I'm just making that a larger lot. There's a barn out back there, you want to make sure that the barn was kept on his property. I don't want to get too convoluted, but what made this hard for me was part of this land was registered land and part of this land was unregistered land. And Larry knows. In order to subdivide registered land, land court land, you have to go through the land court engineering for their approval, and it takes a year or two. So, instead, we went through the land court process of withdrawing the land from registered status, which then left it all in unregistered status, which allows our engineer to draw the plan the town wanted and that Larry wanted, and then to just record it at the registry of deeds. I don't know if I answered your question.
Where's the frontage?
The frontage on Ashland Street for the houses?
To satisfy the Form A requirements.
For, well, to satisfy the Form A is the lots that have the houses have the frontage and there's some being added to it. The lots that are, the parcels that are being conveyed to the town don't have frontage because everybody can, well, if one part does have that small strip of frontage on Ashland Street-
That 84, 85 feet.
There's no frontage needed for the property.
But that is also labeled as not a buildable, not a separate buildable.
There's this parcel here, 40 feet.
Yeah.
But it's being combined with the golf course land, which has frontage on Bedford Street.
That's, that was the original question?
Yeah.
We're using, that's what we're using?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
If the board approves, we'll not be quiet. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next sign is left.
Sean, no way you can leave the window?
Sorry?
No way you can leave the window.
Yeah, I'll pick them up tomorrow.
So, I think that this is the Parcel A on High Street?
Yes.
We're going to be discussing?
Yes.
Mr. Riley, sir?
Hi, Sean Riley, 511 Street, once again. This is just a pretty straightforward Form A where Parcel A is being cut off of a larger parcel that has frontage over on Brockton Avenue, and Parcel A is being combined with the property at 295 Ashland Street, which has frontage both on Ashland and High Street.
Which one's 295?
The corner lot?
Corner, okay, so we plot two.
Is there anything else you need to tell us about this, Sean?
No.
Okay.
Great.
I just gave you the shot.
So, there's a house on the corner, the greenhouse?
I don't know, it's the house that's been hit by a car twice.
It's a lot of houses in towns that were hit by a car twice. All right, so it's that parcel out back of it?
Right.
So, it's Parcel A? Oh, I'm splitting Parcel A and Parcel B?
Correct. This, this parcel was purchased by the town during the most recent auctions. And one of them, Milton owns it. Most of it is swampland. There's some swampland over near the back of 295 Ashland Street, so we're purchasing that parcel. The hope is, to be honest with you, we hope to come in hopefully in a month or two from now and try to see if we have, or we need to create a new lot on High Street. This is step one.
So, this isn't the lot where they've been trying to build condos for a bunch of years? That's the other side of Portofinos?
The other side of what?
Portofinos. One of these lots along Brockton Avenue?
No, that's 380 Brockton Ave., or 360 something, 340, 60 or 80 Brockton Ave., somewhere over there.
But this doesn't doubt?
No.
Okay.
No. This was the land the town owned that was in between Brockton, High, Brockton Street, High Street, Brockton Ave., sorry, and High Street, that we just sold at auction.
Is Parcel A and Parcel B currently joint?
Yes, it's one large parcel.
Okay, and you're looking to split off Parcel A?
Correct.
What will happen to that?
It's going to be combined with the lot at the corner, the 295 Ashland Street lot, and then we're looking to come back to you with a new plan to show two lots, one with the existing house, one with a potential new building lot.
All right.
With frontage on High Street.
So, that building, that house on the corner of High and Ashland?
Yep.
This Parcel A become attached to that land there?
Correct.
All right, and that would make it a nearly two acre, acre and a half lot? No, it'll remain two plots?
I'm sorry?
It will remain two plots?
It will, I mean, the assessors eventually will combine it as one.
Okay.
Until or unless we split it up again, they'll just keep updating whatever plan gets submitted.
So, you're proposing Parcel A be a non-build, not a buildable lot?
I'm proposing Parcel A is to be combined with the existing lot at 295 Ashland Street because that, we have to show frontage. Can't just cut off backland in the middle of the woods.
Right, that's my question. So, we're not saying Parcel A won't remain a non-buildable lot. It will become a buildable lot when joined with 225 Ashland.
We're working on that. It has to have its own frontage, has to have enough upland, there's wetlands out back, so we're trying to figure out what, could it be done?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah. You just did.
Is, why is Parcel B shown as a parcel as opposed to a lot? And it has frontage on Brockton Avenue, and it has sufficient area?
I don't know, it's an engineering thing. I don't know that that's buildable at all, only because of the amount of wetlands over there. If you're familiar with Brockton Avenue and High Street, you know, on the corner, if you're looking, if you're on Brockton Avenue, there's a, something on the corner that like sells vans and trucks. You know what I'm talking about there? Right to the left of that is just an open expanse, that's where all the wetlands are. That's Parcel B and A. That's where that is. I don't know what the owner of Parcel B is going to do in the future, if she's just going to retain it, if she's going to try to subdivide. I don't, I don't represent her, so I don't want to say it's not buildable, but I believe.
Oh, okay. So, they didn't buy Parcel B? Parcel B is owned by somebody else?
Yes, correct. She's retaining that.
Parcel B and Parcel A were the two parcels that, they, were actually one parcel that was auctioned off about a month ago by the town.
All right.
It had been school land? And then they turned it over to the selectmen, and the selectmen-
No, that's a different piece.
Yeah, that, not that piece.
That's not this piece?
I think that was private. It was, I think it was just taken from non-payment of taxes because no one could, I don't believe they could build on it.
Was that the piece of land, I mean, I'm on the housing trust, and-
No.
No, it's a different deal?
Different one.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. Because the housing trust, they got some money to do environmental analysis.
So, Abington Investments didn't buy it at the auction, someone else did?
Correct.
Okay, but Abington Investments is buying Parcel A from, and splitting it off?
Correct.
And combining it at 225 Ashland Street?
295.
295 Ashland Street? Okay. Which would turn that property into much larger property?
Correct. Buying more of a backyard.
Interesting.
It's a start of a process.
Yeah.
Make a motion, approve or not approve. One second.
Second. Motion being seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Your sign on the left.
Sign on the left.
Thank you.
One more. Should take us to the sixth one?
Two are my laws, the other two, though. Two are my laws, the other four.
Yes. Yep. I don't know if anyone's here to speak on it.
So, this is 90 Warren Street, 90 Warren Street?
Are you representing them?
I am. Sean Riley, 511 Street. Cal Gavi submitted this plan, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions on it. But if I can give you some background so it kind of makes sense in the big scheme of things. Down on the end of Warren Street, the Noon family, he lives there at 85 Warren Street. And they used to have horses out there, corrals, they trained horses for decades. And Tom Noon, the son, became an Olympian horse rider. And he bought his mom's house, mom passed away, so he bought the house at 85 Noon, 85 Warren Street. And you can see the area for the corral is still out there, some foundations of older buildings. Tom wants to resurrect the horse activity down there.
So, he owns Lot 1?
He owns, well, he owns, see the one across the street from that? It says Thomas Noon III, is it?
Yeah.
That's 85 Warren Street. He owns the land out back behind that, which is shown as kind of a private way, it's not really a way, but it's labeled as Thomas Noon III. And then there's land out back behind that, which is not really relevant to this plan?
Thank you.
Oh, so Warren Street stops here?
Right, Warren Street stops, you can see where the line is there. His wife Rachel purchased the property across the street, which is 90?
90.
90 Warren Street. And you can see the frontage that 90 Warren, that's the only frontage that 90 Warren Street ever had, because that's where the public way ended, may have no rights to what was, at one point contemplated to be an extension, but it was never extended. So-
So, that house only has 20 feet?
20 feet of frontage is all it's ever had, yeah. Mr. Noon, so the purpose of this plan is Rachel bought the house and all the land out behind that, that Parcel 3, Parcel 2, which doesn't have any rights to the street, ID, there's a lot of research on this one. Then Tom and his wife would like to retain ownership of everything but Lot 1. They're going to sell off the house, and they're going to keep the open land. Some of it may be used, again, for a horse corral or something out back there. But this, again, preliminary, because there's wetland issues we're dealing with, the use of it is protected under the Dover Amendment, but it's a different hearing. So, the purpose of this is to, really is to create Lot 1, the existing house, so that it can be sold, and to retain everything else that's shown on the plan, will be eventually all put under the Noon name. Part of it's under Rachel, part of it's under Tom.
All right, a couple of questions here. So, what Dover Amendment extension are they?
The use of property for agricultural purposes is allowed without-
Okay, yeah.
And horse, riding horse training, corrals is one of those protected uses. Still have to abide by like building setbacks, things like that.
So, that-
And wetlands.
So, they own both sides? They own this piece here, which backs up to the Housing Authority and basically kind of Trukey's and-
No, it doesn't go as far as Trukey's.
Says Trukey Realty Trust next to it.
Oh, might be a Trukey family member. Where is Trukey Family Trust?
Right up there.
Yeah, that's-
So, they, on this end?
Oh, let me-
That might be Trukey, right?
I don't know what that is, to be honest with you. I'm trying to get my bearings as to-
Yeah, but that goes up to Randolph Street?
Does, this is-
So, event, like eventually, if you just keep going, that might be the back end? No, because that would be, no.
I'd have to look at the assessors' plan.
Yeah, no, 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 Lincoln Street would cut that off, so it's not, right?
It could be the, the Trukey Realty Trust could be the way back of the Trukey supermarket property. It could be. Because I think, everyone's familiar with the Trukeys, we go out back, the end of their parking lot, there's wetlands up there.
So, right now, Lot 1 owns 2 and 3, breaking off 2 and 3 from Lot 1?
Yes.
So, where it's a non-conforming lot, can we break off parcels off of it?
It's, it's, it conforms in the lot area, and that's all the front-
Just frontage.
It's all the frontage it ever had.
Forever before, so.
Father, so, yeah, it's been, it's an odd-
It is odd.
Is that Susan Meyer's mother's house a long time ago? I think it might have been.
Her name was, was that Madeline?
Yes, Madeline Stone.
She may have owned the house, she owned the land out back, which is now, well, it's out on the left-hand side of the plan. One of the Meyers, I believe, family members owned it at one point. The land out behind Tom Noon's house on this side of the road, 85, that's what I grew, we call it the pit. You can access it from like Char Avenue.
Used to cut through there to go to school.
Yeah, exactly. Boy.
We've gone back too far now.
The access to 2 and 3.
It's all wood.
This will all be combined, so they're going to put it-
This one's going to be combined with it?
Yeah, this is going to be gravel road, they're going to retain ownership.
So, there's no, no buildings on any of this other stuff?
Not at this point. They're hoping to build a indoor corral out behind 85, but everything's still being drawn up. There are, there are wetlands issues. That Parcel 3 you see there, I'm learning a lot about it. If you walk out there, you go up a steep hill, and then it falls way down, because apparently it's gravel they dug out. I don't know if it was for the Housing Authority property or for building in, in Abington, actually, the former highway superintendent, Dick Burns-
Dick Burns used to live down the other street.
He lived, this house that Mr. Noon owns, 85 Warren Street, he sold it to the Noons.
And then the Schuman-Cusacka Cant also goes in here somewhere?
The Schuman, we're trying to figure that out. There's a branch, the Schuman-Cusacka Cant that goes, looking at the plan, to the right, and it goes out into like Madeline Stone's old property, out beyond to the right of Parcel 3. But there is also some other water line that comes through 85, that I don't think it's the Schuman-Cusacka Cant, the Schuma, when it's called the Schuma. But that's what the wetland scientists are trying to identify right now.
That was Stone's pit, used to play with Dick Burns' kids and the profits and-
Yeah, it hasn't changed in gazillion years.
All right, so, does Lot 1 still have enough change?
It doesn't have, I would, the proposals, I believe the building inspector saw this, I don't want to speak for them, but it has the exact same frontage it's always had. So, it's pre-existing non-conforming?
It's, it's no more non-conforming, because it has the frontage that it has now, and it meets the area that's required in the district, so it's not more non-conforming.
Right. So, sorry, why are we splitting off Parcel 2?
Because it's, it's just a strip of land that goes really, it benefits the Noons more than it benefit this house. And honestly, they want to make it clear that this strip of land that's 40 feet wide, at the bottom 50 feet at the top, is not a roadway extension.
And so, who's, where's that going to? Who's taking?
Two?
Yeah.
The Noon family is going to own it. Right now, as I said, it's under Rachel's name on the right side of, or that right side of the plan, it's under Tom's name on the left side.
Larry, let me ask you a question. That piece of property that he's talking about, should that be labeled as, so in the future, that it's, no one thinks that they can actually extend the street? I mean, if they're looking at who's going to not extend the street, should that be sort of noted that way in the future?
We-
Unless they wanted to do it.
Yeah, theoretically, we could come back with a proposing session, but I can tell you-
Oh, okay, so it's not something-
Now, we're trying to have control over it if they want it to come back with some configuration.
So, Sean, if, can you just go for a second, sorry?
Sure.
Come over to you?
Yeah.
So, if this goes through, Parcel 3, Parcel 2, this one, this one, this one, all in common ownership?
Eventually, it will be. This is all owned under the name of Thomas Noon, and this is owned under his wife Rachel's name. So, we're trying to identify, we're putting under one name.
Okay, so this isn't, is this a paper street, or is this?
No.
No easement, no?
It's owned outright 100% by Thomas Noon, and no one has rights to use it. There was one mention of it, there was one mention in one of the older deeds that said something like, if this, if I ever, Malcolm Jordan used to own this property. Only if you're a real estate idiot like me, you'd know that name. He owned a lot of land, especially off of Char Avenue in this area of town. And if I build a road, then I will build it in order, and I will relocate it, so I will give frontage to some of the adjoining parcels. So, he never gave them the, a right, they never declared it a road. He said, if I build it, I will make sure that I do locate it, so I give you frontage, meaning I'm not going to keep it 10 feet away from you. So, that wasn't under law, in Chapter 183, Section 58, doesn't give anyone the right to claim use of the paper street, because it's not, doesn't qualify in terms of law. So, Noon's family owns 100% of it.
All right. So, if we approve this, are we creating a problem down the road?
So to speak.
Yes.
No, we just own, basically, the end of Warren Street would be owned by the Noon family, as it is now.
Right, so, I mean, is the end of Warren Street going to be considered frontage on Warren Street?
Frontage on Warren Street.
At 50 feet?
I mean, at some point, you're going to need to have to access Warren Street, and I want, I guess, I know it's not before us right now, that question, but-
The, I understand the question, and it's, it's such an old piece of property, the driveway, you can see that shows paved driveway, which for the Noons, it comes right off the end of Warren Street to the Noons property. There's all parking areas, the houses, the house is right where, basically, where Noon is roughly. So, I guess you could say, in a way, that this, Tom's house has no frontage. It's true. That's just the way it's always been.
Yeah, I just, now that we're shuffling things around, I don't know if that kind of resets what we're doing.
I can't create frontage unless I build a street.
Yeah.
And that's what we're not doing.
Not at this point, too.
I don't predict that to happen as long as the Noon family's alive, or as long as I'm alive.
Well, he has, I mean, technically, does he have 50 feet?
He owns fifty feet right there.
So he has fifty feet.
The front of fifty feet of the, at the end of the road.
At the end of the road is fifty feet. No, no different than having twenty here. They have fifty there.
You're right, I'll take that. This, yeah, there's something quirk in the law about the end of the street.
It's frontage.
It is, but it doesn't tell them the right to use it, but because it's public, I can use it.
That's kind of my question.
So this has been a law school exam problem. Maybe I started looking at this thing. And the Noons just would like to sell the house at ninety, just recoup some of their money that'll allow them to afford to use the, you know, the rest of it for the horse, horses. It's not a horse competition facility, I was gonna say this now in case someone says, they're not gonna be three hundred people that are watching horse shows. That's not what it is. It's a barn where people drop off their horses for several weeks or months and then the horses are trained to basically compete. Tom is, like I said, a professional Olympian horse rider who's bringing all that knowledge back to Abington. There's a similar location like that.
Let's take a ride down there, I haven't been down there in years, just to check it out.
Do not go off the page.
So when that house was built?
It's.
It always had, when it was built, yeah.
It only had the twenty feet of frontage?
Yeah, that lot has been shaped that way since beginning of time.
Interesting.
Looks like it anticipated that.
Yeah, we're questioning those.
I really didn't mean to take up your time with these weird formays, they're usually very straightforward, but.
We've missed them since Russ died.
Which was what came into my office in the last three months and that.
We do the annual report, we didn't have very many formays at all last year, so we've got three tonight.
That's all, that's all this is, is grading lot one so we can sell off lot one and retain the rest.
All right. Someone wanna make a motion?
Motion not required. I mean, approval not required, sorry.
All those favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Well.
So.
So Tom Noon.
Do you wanna do the update on that very quickly?
Yeah, I'd like to do that. You wanna do the update on the fire station CPW, please?
Sure, be happy to. Sean Riley, a resident at two seventy-one Dorsey Lane, I'm not here as attorney Sean Riley. I'm here as a volunteer member of the DPW and Fire Station Building Committee, of which I'm the chairperson. Lucky me. Wanted to ask just for an update. I didn't bring any notes or anything, so feel free to ask questions, fill in the blanks. But as you know, the town meeting voted to appropriate thirty-eight point five million dollars for the construction of a new central fire station, uh, which would be to the left of the current police station on Central Street and a new DPW garage would be built out in the rear. There was also one point two million allocated to the project because whether the construction project was approved or not, we had to dismantle the old fuel pumps that were there for all the town vehicles. They were underground and insurance company wanted them out. Those have been removed, I can give you the report, they were a hundred percent clean, no leaks whatsoever. Uh, the new fuel station is under construction. That's gonna be, if you've gone by, you see the new driveway, it's coming in on the right side of the police station as you're looking at the police station. We call that phase one. We have one contractor putting in that driveway, putting in the fuel pumps and building the new salt shed. We previously had two old wooden salt sheds of a total of maybe a little under six thousand square feet, maybe, maybe not even that. The new one will be one salt shed with sixty to a hundred square feet, uh, with concrete walls and a steel structure with a vinyl cover like you see in all the new salt sheds. That is gonna be in the back right-hand corner of the property. We have some, so, everything else has been demolished on the site except for one of the two salt sheds because we have salt in it. And we are desperately waiting to get the new salt shed built so we can take the salt out of that one, put it in the new one and then rip down that final salt shed so they can continue working over there. That salt shed, the structure itself, I'm told, is due to arrive on site the beginning of October and then it takes three, four weeks to erect it. So our target is to have that up, inspected and then filled with our salt by Thanksgiving, December first, something in that. The weather has been helping us greatly, so super. You may have heard, we, we ran into issues digging out in that back area where the new salt sheds going. Um, and I think this Ford is very familiar. The town owned the land previously where, which was the, the police station and the DPW. And the DPW had its main building out front and then a bunch of small little buildings that were built over the years. The main building was nineteen forty-two and then there's basically these crappy little buildings out back that they were just put together. And then the town bought the house that was next door to the police station and that land ran all the way out back to the cemetery. That allowed us a little bit more wiggle room. We knew that out behind the police station, the town had used part of that as an old dumping site for certain things. So we did a lot of test borings out in that. We knew what to, somewhat what to expect. You do borings and it's like sticking a needle in a haystack. You hit something here, but you don't hit something there, there. We did a few borings on the private property the town bought because there were trees there that were forty, fifty feet tall, forty, fifty years old. So we assumed that that would be relatively clean and why would the town be dumping on private property? Well, come to find out, the town dumped on private property back sixty, seventy years ago. So as we were digging into that area, we found more of the same that we found in our area. We had allocated money aside for.
More of the same meaning.
Sorry?
More of the same meaning.
Oh, uh, there was debris, basically. There was trash bags, there were pieces of metal. We did find one, I don't know if it was a heating oil tank, but a tank fully intact, nothing leaking, thank God. It was like one of the first things that they found.
Was that the thing sticking in the stamp?
Yeah. Stick, no, no, it's a different sort of, to that one. We found these old, old telephone poles, pieces that were just thrown out there. So, uh, under current laws, we have to like take that and put it all in separate piles because like the telephone poles have pre-oso. So you can't just throw them in any fill yard. You have to basically document it, have DEP document it, and then wherever it's going, they have to review it, document and accept it. So that's a different truck going to a different place. Same thing with anything metal we found went into our metal dumpster. The, the tank, when we found the tank, we had to alert DEP, but there was no spill, uh, which was great. But you still have to log it and then they cut it up by a licensed contractor, they move it out of there. So, um, it costs us more than we had budgeted, but we're still moving forward before people free, not total budget. The cost that we had budgeted to clean out that area was higher than we anticipated. But I have to give credit to our contractors who have done yeoman's work in trying to use whatever clean soil we could in different areas, taking out the, the, um, I'm learning, there's different class that you might know, there's class A, class B, class C soils. Everything's tested and filed differently and it goes to different places. Apparently there's a place down in East Bridgewater or Bridgewater that takes a lot of this stuff. But everything has to be documented in all those piles, if you were about to sell piles. They have to be tested, sent out to a lab, come back before they can be sent anywhere. And that itself, to make the pile, it takes three or four weeks just to get the test back. So we just have to kind of sit there and wait till we can move these things. In the meantime, so phase one slowed down a little bit for us, phase two got us ready to go as soon as the bid was awarded in June. So they did, they got started right away, I think it was right after July first, they started the demolition. That's G and R Construction out of Hanover, first company on phase one is APC, another local company. They've been working great together and coordinating and everything with the police department. We have regular meetings every Tuesday for phase two, the construction of the buildings and every other meeting, every other week now for phase one, because that's kind of close to wrapping up as soon as that structure goes up and you'll see that roadway, a base coat of pavement will be put in again sometime in the near future. Uh, the base coat, the top coat won't be put on until towards the end of the project for all the reasons you guys are aware during construction. That will, that new driveway will become the primary entrance and exit for police cruisers, which currently come out the left side of the building, but since we're gonna be constructing over in that area, they'll be using it. So that all of this was coordinated and orchestrated so that we, the police station could always run twenty-four hours a day and we always had to have a fuel station. Because of the delay in the fuel station being finished, right now the, the, the town vehicles are, are using one of the.
Sunoco.
Yeah, Sunoco, which they've done in the past, like in storms and all. So once that new fuel station is up and running, they'll, they'll come back to the town. Town still pays pretty much the same amount, but, and just so people at home, it's not just the police and fire. It's all the DPW trucks, it's any town old school bus, it's the border health car and all the town vehicles use that fuel station.
What's the target date again for that, for completion?
Fuel station, um, it is, it's pretty much in the ground right now. The tank's gonna be above ground, we're waiting delivery. We had an issue of whether it was a one-sided station or a two-sided station. We, we wanted a two-sided station. One of the plans showed a one-sided station. So initially they started building the one-sided station and we noticed it, uh, actually Chief Glenn noticed it first. So we told, no, we want that second access so we can get on either side. So especially during a snowstorm, if a truck's coming back, it can load up with fuel or when it's exiting. Same thing with the police and fire. Especially, uh, things were designed so that Tower One, our largest, longest truck, can kind of get around the entire property. So having that access on both sides makes that a bit easier. So I can't give you a date when the fuel station's gonna be open, but it'll be open pretty much around the same time the salt sheds open.
So the town will be using that fueling station once it's finished rather than the Sunoco?
Correct, yep.
I've been watching all the meetings on YouTube and every Sunday after church, I take a ride down to Zero Southern Street and I take a ride over there to see the progress going.
It's taking a lot of time and I do have to give credit to the members of our committee. Bob Persakini, who was also a member of the Library Building Committee, if you don't know Bob, Bob, uh, was the, it's like the CEO of a very large HVAC company in Boston and just knows everything about how to read a plan and plumbing and HVAC and electrical. He's been a godsend, really being an extra set of eyes in the plans, critiquing things as we go. Gordon Slaney, a lot of you guys might know Gordon, he was, uh, again, another professional who's been on the committee, fantastic wealth of knowledge. Derek Hamadi, who is a member of the Fire Department, he's a Fire Department, a firefighter EMT. He has been on this project for about six years now. He started with the original fire station design, which remember at one point was gonna be over here at the so-called Maple Butler Land. And they were looking at different little school, he's been on that for six years. So Derek has just the history of everything coming forward to the, uh, to this project. And then currently the selectman representative is Kevin Donovan, uh, it was Roger Woods, it was Alex Wazanson, it rotates, but now Kevin Donovan is on there. And Kevin has been on numerous building committees. He and I were both on the police station building committee. And I was on the police station building committee, the town offices building committee and the school, the high school, middle school building committee. So this is my fourth building committee and I promised my wife this is my last. It does take a lot of time from the volunteers, but, um, the, both John Stone and Brian McLaughlin from the DPW and Chief Glenn and Deputy Driscoll from the Fire Department come to all of our meetings. So there's, every week we're getting updates. Our project managers, Palmeroy Associates, who have an office down in East Bridgewater have been excellent. They have at least two guys on site every day. One of them now is, one of them is an Abington resident, so he has every, a lot of reasons to make sure things go smoothly. One of the things you notice, we talked about, we're paying for the sins of our forefathers. We're, whatever we find on the ground, we have to pay for. That's construction. We were concerned, what about under the actual highway department buildings, the old ones? We've been relatively fortunate. It's been relatively clean with the exception of that thing you see sticking out of the ground. Apparently it was an old piston they used to raise vehicles that sometime back in history, they just buried and cemented the floor over it. So we have to remove that. There's actually three of them, you see one. That actual work is starting tomorrow. It's, some of it is highly technical stuff. Gone are the days, thirty, forty years ago, we just scooped up everything, threw it in a truck and it disappeared. You, everything is documented and, um, as much as it's sometimes frustrating, I have to give credit how thorough they are, the contractors. But it is frustrating, we're on a really tight budget. We knew that going in. Uh, other towns are building one building for more than the thirty-eight million that we've been allocated, but, um, our budgets, our cost estimates came in good, our budgets came in, uh, bids came in good. We always know there's change orders, so we're really monitoring those prices. If there is a way for someone else to pay for the cost of what was buried out back there and not us, that would be great. So I continue to play powerball and I'll contribute if that happens. But it's, I'm excited because we're gonna see, you're gonna see the DPW foundation actually gonna be pouring the walls for that in the next three weeks, during the next three weeks. And the pistons that you see sticking out of the ground there, those are gonna be removed during the next, uh, DEP had to come in. We had to map everything out today and lay out the fabric. DEP had to come down and inspect it and they give you the, okay, now you can start. So they'll start working on some of that, uh, tomorrow. That'll continue and as soon as that's out, they're gonna start driving the, the pillars for the, um, fire station. So that, you'll probably see where are we now, September? I, I had it scheduled in my car, sorry, October-ish, you'll see that get going or late September. So soon, you're gonna see things coming out of the ground, which will be exciting for, um, a lot of reasons. But so far it's great. I know in conjunction with this, Liz has applied for a grant from the state to replace the water main on Central Street. Because if you flashback a little bit, um, the Central Street Bridge was just recently replaced a few years ago. And when they did that, they replaced the water line from Washington Street to that bridge, which is kind of near like Clemmer Point's office. The water line that goes from the bridge to Plymouth Street is really old. We've already tapped into it successfully, the water department was nervous that it wasn't gonna stay together, but it's old. So it's in the town's best interest to replace that water line and we will know in about a month, in October, if the town gets that grant. And if we do, we're gonna try to point it so that gets all done while we're building the building. So it's, you know, you're gonna have, uh, just reliable water service for our town safety buildings. It's reliable now, it'll be more reliable with the new.
Would that include paving the streets for lots?
Yeah, I, I don't know what the specs are for it. That won't be in my building committee, that's a separate project, but we're gonna coordinate our timing obviously because, um, we'll see when that all gets taken care of.
Two questions.
Sure.
So when you got the soil tests back from out back, everything can be cleaned or was there any?
Yeah, there's, there's no hazardous waste, you know, twenty-one East stuff. There's no hazardous waste, it's just that clean loam is just that clean, there's nothing in it. So if you had a couple of paper bags, it's not clean, has to be put to the side, has to be tested, not paper bags, plastic bags. There was, I wasn't out there doing the digging, so I can't tell you exactly what everything was in there. But there was just enough stuff where you can't say it's clean, so you have to test it. You have to, you know, and sometimes, um, it's, it's not actually the material, but did it leave back, did it leave behind any residue? And I can't tell you the chemicals they're testing for, but there's a gazillion of them. So like, as I said, they determine what they can reuse, like some of the piles out there, they're keeping because they're gonna use that to backfill the salt shed walls when it goes up. Some of the piles like out behind, over in the actual DPW side, we have the old DPW, beautifully clean sandy soil that they're gonna reuse around foundations for the DPW and likely, um, we had a discussion today that they should be able to also use it for the Fire Department. But before the contractor can use it, our engineers have to approve it also. So there's this whole chain of command where it had, things have to get three different stamps and three different approvals before it can be put anywhere.
So no remediation issues out back and when you took down the DPW buildings, were no secret drains with oil or anything or?
We thought that would be the worst. It was the pistons and there was a small, small, uh, area of like hydraulic fluid which they contained. And we brought DEP, we reported everything, there was nothing done at nighttime or anything, we reported everything because it's town property. And it's, it's very well contained. So, um, they'll be working on, if they find something funky when they dig the next two weeks near the pistons, they'll report it and tell us. But we're all hoping for the best.
So one of our big discussions was about the drainage pipe that goes out to the pond. And during the first couple of months, we had a couple of really big rainstorms. Everything went fine with drainage and runoff, there were no issues, everything's efficient so far.
No, I haven't seen any issues with that. There's minor details they're looking at, like where the sewer, where the new sewer line that's on our site will connect to the street. They wanna change the angle of it so it'll flow better, so the engineers are looking at that. Uh, I can tell you our, our putters have been great to work with and they've actually attended some of our meetings. Haven't had any issues there. It's, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts going on, it's going to accelerate once the buildings go up.
So no plan changes that would be coming back to us?
No, other than I, I do wanna clarify for the record, the, the fuel line. No, other than I do wanna clarify for the record, the, the fuel island, cause I think the plan that you guys got, why we approved, showed a one-sided fuel island. Which shocked me and the rest of the committee because of all the design development plans, we showed a one-sided fuel island. So I'm gonna.
Two-sided.
It showed a one, yeah, sorry. We saw a two-sided. The final draft that got to you guys, remember it was, it was submitted right before the meeting? It showed a one-sided.
It was one-sided throughout the whole process?
Yeah, throughout the planning board process. And I never noticed it, none of us noticed it in the committee until they started building it, like where's the other driveway?
Yeah, I saw that. I watched that meeting and Kevin really talked about this. He talked about, you know, have to come back for us and stuff like that.
Yeah, we basically told our engineers that you're designing the second driveway at your cost, not the town's cost and they agreed.
So they're not gonna come before us again on us?
No, but we would, we have a lot more work to do, so I don't wanna give you an amended ASBIL right now. It's not time for ASBIL, but if there's any other things, we would let you know. Building locations aren't changing. Trying to think if there's anything else that would jump up in your world. Not that I can think of off the top of my head, but we know, we have to alert you if there's something significant.
So I guess it's good that the planning board chair watches those meetings.
Yeah, they're all public. The work sessions that we do every Tuesday are in a trailer. We don't take those, cause it's just a lot of RFIs and ASIs and PCOS and all this acronyms that I'm learning. But it's, everyone is cost conscious and everyone is very, paying very much attention to detail. They know that we are being, not, I don't wanna say cheap, we're being frugal with our, with our money, because we don't have a lot of money to buy any extras and we've kind of let the contractors know that. So they're helping us wherever they can save us money. Like I said, by reusing some of the soil, we don't have to truck it in.
Well, you know, you hear all the horror stories, like that new fire station complex going up in Brockton, the center of Brockton.
Yeah.
Wicked overruns on that thing. And City of Brockton's in tough financial shape anyway. And that and the new police station complex in Quincy, a lot of overruns on that.
And Brockton had some overruns because of some of the site conditions, even though they did, you know, they did test for it. Cause anyone in construction knows digging is the scariest part of the construction project, cause you don't know what's down there. You can do three times as many tests and you're still, are not gonna catch everything. But so far, so good. We are moving. We still anticipate opening the building sometime in early twenty twenty-seven. Don't know, January, February, not sure yet what that is. When the DPW structure arrives, that should go up relatively quickly, cause that's a pre-engineered building. And the fire station will take a little longer, cause that's not a pre-engineered building. That's steel, it'll be steel. Trying to get the steel order in as soon as we can. Curveball is the potential tariffs from?
A lot of steel comes from Canada.
It does. And the Trump administration is threatening to maintain or raise the tariffs. So we're trying to get our order in, trying to time it right. Whenever everyone's in a good mood, we'll order the see where it goes.
Yeah, it's, to me it's good to hear when I watch those meetings about the fiscal concerns you guys have as far as keeping this thing on budget and stuff like that.
I'm a taxpayer too and it's nerve wracking. I mean, this middle high school came in under budget and early. I wish I could say that's gonna happen for every project and it usually doesn't with municipal construction, cause there's there's higher costs for municipal construction just in labor alone. But it's a lot of the ground surprises. What's that?
It's a lot of the surprises that you find in the ground.
Right, and, and that's why I'm saying when we come out of the ground, I think we can all kind of relax a little bit more and then we'll deal with some of the things in the building. So you gotta move that door, might cost you, we might, you know, it's a lot of little things we're gonna tweak as you go, like you wouldn't would when you're building a house. But in most, many of those cases, it doesn't cost us anything. It just improves the details of the building.
Primarily the land is in swamp land and it's only a single-story building, so that's not.
The left side was swamp there.
The front.
The left side of the site was.
On the left side towards the road.
That's why the Fire Department has a slightly different foundation than the DPW building. It'll be sturdier, so to speak. So that's my update. I'm sorry that I've taken up way too much of your time. And I'm happy to come in here in another two or three months to give you another update as we kind of see things progress. Right now it's a kind of a boring, flat site. But we'll see a lot happening this fall.
And watch the meetings on YouTube.
No, it's interesting, all the steel and the salt shed and the walls being formed and
Yeah.
It's gonna come quick.
It is. We'll see it happening. But thank you and thank you to the town's people for your patience.
Thank you, Sean.
No, that's for me.
Okay, all right, good. All right. Fifteen, six twenty. Public hearing definitive subdivision plan forty-four, fifty-four Linwood Street. I'm gonna read the public hearing notice. The Abington Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September second, twenty twenty-five at Abington Town Hall, five hundred Kalenawitz Way at six twenty P M. On a definitive subdivision plan application to create three residential lots. Plan is entitled forty-four and fifty-four Linwood Street, Abington, Mass. Winterfox State Subdivision, prepared for Winterfox LLC, six eighty-one Temple Street, Whitman. Passed by MP Design Consultants, one eighteen Turnpike Road in South Borough, Mass. And C W Garvey Company Surveyors and Engineers in Whitman. Plan is dated February ninth, twenty twenty-three, February ninth, twenty twenty-four, February eighth, twenty twenty-four, advised through June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Lots are located on Assessor's Map, seven lots nine and eleven in Abington. Property is owned by Winterfox LLC, six eighty-one Temple Street, Whitman, Mass. Plans may be viewed at the Office of the Town Clerk, the Avenue Tunnel, Monday through Thursday, eight thirty P M to four thirty P M. Friday, eight thirty A M to twelve fifteen P M. Pursues Chairman Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five and August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Do we have a representative for the comments? Come up, could you identify yourselves, please?
Mark Galencar with MP Design Consultants. We received from Silva Engineering today the response to comments, of the additional comments we received. We believe we'll need some time to address those comments. And we would like the, the hearing to be continued to November hearing, if possible. I haven't had time to really take time to look through the review comments yet. We just received them today. But I understand there might be some items that we need to coordinate as well as with Conservation Commission. The NOI peer reviewer had some comments as well that Mr. Silva also commented on top of it. So we kind of need to, we need time to resolve amongst ourselves and provide the final response to comments to properly have a constructive meeting.
That seems fair. I mean, a lot of folks have come out for this meeting.
Of course, yeah.
But, but.
I can, I can still present.
If you just got this, Larry.
I received it today.
Respond to it.
Yes, yes.
Are you the lead engineer?
No, Carlos Ferrer is. Yeah, he's unable, he wasn't able to be here tonight. Yeah.
Any more comments on this?
Honestly, I, I really hope that at our next meeting, there can be a really good, thorough final plan, cause this has been kind of hanging out there for a year plus, I think, at this point, so.
Right, it's, it is a new application and we've received the comments, the peer review comments today.
This is a horror show to this board. We've typically told our clients that, or our consultants, if they start to run in, it's falling apart, just to stop. But you understand, you're paid to have them do this, this review, but that's an incredibly thick review. We don't know what to think of it other than.
I apologize only that we would have hoped to try to get it to you earlier, but we really just didn't have enough time to be able to get it all and to get it to a point.
So there's a couple.
He did get it kind of late.
It's thorough. Yeah, there's a couple of parts to this. One is that there were prior comments from Norwood Engineering.
Yep.
That Larry.
Yeah, what I, yeah, what I wanted to say how thick it is, is I glanced through it.
Yeah.
I know Mr. Silva included the peer review comments from the previous consultant.
Yep.
As well as the peer review comments from the NOI consultant. And then the last two pages are actual his comments.
Uh, new comments.
New comments. So the way, the reason why it's thick is because Mr. Silva, along with the town, is being thorough to see what has been commented on the previous application, what has been commented with the NOI and now his new comments. So now we need to kind of take everything in, read through it and, and address.
Yeah, I think the problem is a little disconcerting is that the Norwood Engineering comments are not new. So they've been out there for quite some time.
Okay.
So when we see Larry's review of those comments and there's observations there that this hasn't been done or that hasn't been done, resolved or not resolved. In a perfect world, you'd hope that those things had been identified quite some time ago, would by now have been resolved. And then we'd be dealing with just the new comments that, that Larry came up with in the last two or three pages there, but so it's a little bit concerning that, that, that some of those things, as many of those things are still outstanding as they are. And I guess if, we're gonna come back again in a month's time, hopefully we're looking at a resolution of historical comments as well as things that have come up more recently.
Of course.
You could, you wanna do this to November or next month?
Um, I'll probably need until November.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's proven, given the.
Yeah, I just wanna be thorough. I, I didn't.
And you're going on conservation in the engineering.
We're going conservation on the ninth.
Yeah.
So we'll tell them that we have filed a new application for this project, which they wanted us to, to do that, of course. And we'll tell them that we have filed a new application. We received comments, which we'll start, we'll start addressing them. However, again, we, I didn't look at the comments yet to see if there were any historic that hasn't been updated, but we will do that and make sure that everything is addressed.
Do you know the filing deadline's in October for the November meeting?
Right, it's two weeks prior, correct?
It's like three weeks.
Three weeks, so then.
Three weeks, almost a month.
So we'll need September. We can do December.
You wanna change your request to December?
Yeah, we can change it to December. December's fine.
Okay, so we wanna come back in December?
Yes.
And these folks here will be notified about the meeting and stuff like that?
The meeting's being continued technically, you don't need to notify.
Well, I just want you folks to know.
Right.
Cause the meeting will be continued to December. So we're all clear on this. I really appreciate you coming out tonight.
Yes.
You gotta give him a date, sir. Give him a date, sir.
We, can we get a date on this, please?
I'm sorry?
Can we get a date?
Can I just look at a calendar?
It's December, it's the first Tuesday of the month, is that right?
No, first Monday.
I'm sorry?
First Monday.
Monday.
Kevin's grabbing his calendar for me.
We do have a long list. It's all technical stuff, but none of the neighbors are here for the technical stuff.
I wasn't gonna read Larry's letter. December? December?
So December first.
First.
Summer first. So you folks got that, that the speed will be continued to December first?
And the client also has no issues with sending notification to a butters if Liz can provide us the template that you used? We have done that for Conservation Commission because of the continuously.
If you wanna just drop the envelopes off, we'll mail them out.
Okay, perfect.
That's fine. I have a set of envelopes, but I need that for when you're done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We can certainly do that.
Okay, that's great, yeah.
Provide another set of envelopes, so.
So whoever got notified this time around, you'll get another letter with the December date on it.
We need to make a motion to.
To continue it, but I, before you do that, I think there were some people who had some questions or wanted to say something.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Do you need to come up to the microphone? Everybody at home needs to know how scintillating the meeting is.
I might have to revise it a bit because of the way this has turned out. My name is Elise McMenamin and I live at nine Hunts Pond Lane. I'll be as brief as I can, but there's a lot at stake here. I'm actually not surprised to hear that there's a long list of things that were not addressed. At the May twenty-seventh Conservation Committee, the committee advised them strongly to revise the project back. They submitted it. It's still three houses, so that's just another thing that has not been addressed. I wanna make something very clear. As a budding neighbors, we're not opposing to a single family moving into, build their forever home that fits with the neighbors, neighborhood's character. We're pushing back against developers who make a quick profit, who'll move on once the deal is done, leaving long-term consequences for us, the people who live here. As an auditorium profession, I rely a lot on evidence and the record here speaks volumes. Ethic matters. The developers repeatedly have shown a disregard for transparency and accountability. They claim there were no significant trees on the lot. They were. They misrepresented that neighbors were in favor of the project. They're not. There's still, from what I can see in my, in experience, a buffer on Lisa Iello's property, which she sent an email about, had some major concerns about. They submitted plans that only exceed the allowable number of homes, but they're riddled with critical design flaws. The driving force here is profit, plain and simple. Lot three is entirely on wetlands, which we'll address, and there's all sorts of things. So I'm, I'm being honest. In a perfect world, this wouldn't be developed at all, given its environmental sensitivity, habitat value, and the very real flooding and erosion risks that are already present. But if something must be built, maybe a single home on a large parcel consistent with the neighborhood and minimal impact to the environment and butters. We'll, we will not stand by and allow variances to use loopholes, loopholes to shoot corn in multiple homes on undersized lots, especially when doing so destroys flood storage, eliminates habitat, increases the runoff into surrounding properties, risks that are very real. So thank you for your time. I just wanted to make it clear that, again, in May, they told them to revise back their project and they've yet to do so. So I think that speaks volumes about the type of project that's going on here.
Thank you.
Quick question? Yeah, you said it's undersized lots?
Yeah, when I look at it, they're trying to fit three homes into lots that wouldn't have a lot of area around it. Also, one of the houses that the Conservation Committee said is completely on wetlands. They were supposed to extend the roadway. The Fire Department brought up concerns about the wetland crossing, the size of the road. I didn't see sidewalks. I didn't see plans for fire hydrants. The Fire Department was concerned about the turnaround space, that if multiple vehicles had to go in there, the road wouldn't support it. So if they make their roadway bigger, that's gonna push the houses back, further creating wetlands replication issues, further pushing it towards the beavers, the ponds. And then Lisa's house already has a proposed buffer that would go onto her property.
I, I weren't meaning a proposed buffer.
So when they submitted their plans, it was brought up in the Conservation Committee that one of the houses, the way that they had it, and to replicate a wetland would then create a buffer zone on Lisa's property, meaning that she would not be able to do something on her property because of their replications.
So they're creating, because of replication, they're creating.
A buffer.
Property that they come into a. Quick question. So when we have minimum square footage for lots, is it total acreage or is it just billable upland?
It's thirty thousand square feet.
But is it have to be billable? So I think that's where the confusion is, is that each of these lots are.
Sixty percent.
You know, almost two acres and it only needs to be thirty thousand square feet. So.
Just an observation or a question on that, because I think it's pertinent. So under the reduced density regulation where, that this is coming under, I think the stipulation is that it's gotta be thirty thousand square feet upland?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, cause that's the case then.
I won't forget Liz's.
Cause I've been on the home for a lot of trouble out there for that.
Two hundred dash fourteen I one?
No, I, no, I know where that is. Where, where did you find it on the plan?
So under the lots, it shows what the lot, total lot area is and how much is.
So lot three is showing as twenty-six thousand seven hundred and six contiguous upland. So if the minimum requirement is thirty thousand, it looks like lot three doesn't fit on this plan. I guess I'm just looking for validation. Reading that correctly?
I'll double check that one. Yeah. I'll double check that one, lot three.
You're looking for this?
Is that the subdivision book?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. Do you know where you saw it, where it said reduced density? Because I was looking for that all day. In the plan?
Oh, uh, on the half, if residential half density.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's in the, it's actually, it's just in the title. So written someplace. Actually, isn't it filed that way beyond the application?
The number of single-family residential units.
I mean, it was listed to Norwood Engineering, one of their original letters, those referencing, yeah.
Okay. But it's on the, it's on the garbage sheet from.
Yeah, on this current one.
Yeah.
In that note section. It's been submitted under that.
So it was on the pile garbage sheet?
Yeah, on the lotting plan.
There you go. At the top and on the end in the notes.
Talking about V one oh two?
Uh, V one oh two.
Yeah.
So the, uh, Lots one, lots one and two show that they have, uh, sufficient upland areas. On Lot three, um, it's showing twenty six thousand seven oh six. The flooding that Lot two has, um, forty three thousand five hundred. So, uh, not sure if that's, uh, an adjustable one for them or not, uh, but that's, uh, it is showing that it's less than the, uh, it's twenty, twenty-three hundred square feet less than that minimum requirement.
Under that reduced density, that's right.
What's that?
Under that reduced density.
Under the reduced density, yes. Yeah.
Want to make comments?
Yeah, no, I just, um, that is something that we can adjust with the property line. That was a reason, I'm sure it's about four thousand square foot of land that we can transfer between Lot two and three.
Okay.
Just to make some points to what the, um, neighbor has said is we have done the iterations with the Conservation Commission. We have been on site, did test bits, we have met with John Rockwell, the peer reviewer for the NOI. We have adjusted our home design to be as far away from the no build zone and no disturb zone and fifty-foot buffer zones. So we are working with them diligently as we can, but understanding that this site is a very big parcel of land and we're not doing anything that's non-conforming to the zoning. We are actually going half-density, which is something that, you know, um, better for the community when you go half-density because your lots can be sixty thousand square feet. So it's more land for each lot, as well as we're abiding with the width of roadways on the zoning regulations, um, as well as providing sidewalk. And, um, you know, we're doing the best we can with the zoning regulations that allow us to do it for the half-density development. That's all. I just wanted to stay, speak that for the record.
I do have, Mr. Chairman. This is from the treasurer, there are outstanding taxes.
There's some outstanding real estate taxes on the site. It's, uh, two thousand zero eighty-one thirty.
And then this is from, John Stone, Director.
Yeah, this is Bruce Hughes, planning board, CCZBA Building Inspector. Board of Sewer Commissioners, John Stone, Director, August fourteenth, planning board hearing scheduled for September twenty second, second, twenty twenty-five. Dear Mr. Hughes, the planning board, Sewer Department has reviewed your request for information regarding the planning board hearing scheduled for September second. It has the following comments, forty-four and forty-five Greenwood Street. Proposal located on assessment plan seven, lots seven and nine must be approved by the Board of Sewer Commissioners at a regularly scheduled meeting.
Is that reflecting just the sewer or water? Is that similar in the same?
Just sewer, didn't, um, water. It's my understanding that, um, you can't get access to water until you're shovel-ready.
What? What did you say? I didn't hear, sorry.
Uh, I said, it's my understanding that you can't get, water until you're shovel-ready.
Okay.
There's no more or less, I guess. This was from, um, Lisa Iello, she wanted to write for the record.
Yes. Hi, uh, this is from Lisa Iello, and, um, she says, this is in regards to the forty-four, fifty-four Greenwood Street development proposal. My name is Lisa Iello and I reside at eleven Hunts Pond Lane, Abington, as the butter of this proposal. I would like it noted publicly and recorded as part of the nine to twenty-five planning board meeting. I oppose any plans for this proposal to affect my property. I'm putting my property, eleven Hunts Pond Lane, into a buffer zone and it appears the current plans would do.
Um, and then, uh, in brief, I had emailed the fire chief and, um, one of the department members is usually in charge of reviewing plans and getting back to us. He was on vacation when I reached out to the chief. Um, the chief did look at the plans briefly and, um, said from, I'm quoting him, "From my experience as deputy and previously doing fire prevention, I have these concerns. The width of the roadway appears to be twenty-two feet wide, although it may meet minimums. We've had developers widen these roads based on the number of homes, effective snow, unexpected street parking, et cetera, that may hinder our response. There is a bridge that goes over wetlands in some form, as in the past. We need engineers' plans on how it is built and what maximum weight capacity it is to allow the safe passage of emergency vehicles in all weather, the closest hydrant locations, and do they meet minimum distance requirements to each home, as well as proper gallonage? And the cul-de-sac should be completely paved to allow for emergency vehicles to turn, exit, et cetera, properly, um, should a resident unexpectedly park in the circle. This has been an ongoing problem for years. Thanks to the cooperation of developers, it has begun to decrease." And then he says he will have, um, that department member that does the plan review get back to us when he returned from vacation and I did not receive anything, um, in official form from the fire department. But those were those quick thoughts that the chief shared with me. I don't know, last, the end of last week or so.
I'm interested he picked up the bridge.
Lisa, just to be, um, we didn't receive any of those comments, correct, by email?
Um, no, I did, I did send, no, I did send you the request for the, um, bridge, the construction of the bridge.
Yes, we did see that, but I'm saying in a.
Nothing else, no, because I expected to get something more formal from that department.
Okay, perfect.
Um, I still anticipate that.
I just wanted to be sure.
But I did forward them back your response that you didn't want to give us the construction. Um, I think that's going to be a holdup for you.
Yeah, we can, we can do it. It's just a matter of timing and.
Well, I mean, they want to know that, that whatever you're building can hold their trucks. We just got a big, huge, new, shiny, new ladder truck, so they just want to make sure that the big, new, shiny ladder truck can get over that culvert and not sink.
Um, Larry, quick question for you. They submitted stormwater plans. Does that include stormwater management during construction? I'm sorry. Did they submit a stormwater management plan for during construction?
There is a sheet in there that shows how they are, uh, positioning controls during, uh, during construction. We had some concerns with that because it didn't seem to match, you know, where water would be going and part of it was actually, you know, way into a buffer zone. That, you know, it's part, one of the comments we had was regarding.
Okay, just want to make sure, because I know they're requiring, requesting exemption for stormwater, so make sure that's part of the review.
Well, that, that's, um, the, they do that because it's part of the definitive subdivision review.
Right.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's not, we do that so it's not two separate reviews going on at the same time for the same stuff, yeah.
It just looked like a sort of a disconnect between how that lot was being developed and how they were actually showing, how they were controlling it during, during construction. It's as though what they were showing was more what they're showing during the road construction, but not taking into account the actual house construction and the lot.
I just wanted to hold this up for Ms. Gray. Sorry for mispronouncing your name, but we did get the email and so it's been on our meeting.
Question on that, yeah, Mr. Chairman. So Larry, can you help me understand what, I'm not sure I understand what that, but the point that Ms. Iello was raising, that the plan appears to put her, some of her property into a buffer zone? And, and what is that, what exactly is implied there or, or done?
Does that have to do with filling and replicating?
Yeah, it's, it's to do, I mean, I spoke with our environmental consultant. Mr. Silva can, um, jump in and raise his comment. There's nothing that a butter can do if you're doing replication of old well and creating new buffer zones according to the law. Unfortunately, that's not my word. I'm speaking for someone else, Matt Morrow.
Okay, could you repeat that?
Basically, if you're replicating an area and you're creating new buffer zones, right? Even though the buffer zones might be expanding or creating new buffer zones to other butters, it's not illegal to do that.
So basically, you're changing, right, by, um, replacing wetlands that were filled and you're replicating in other areas, you're now creating a different line for where the buffer is to the replicated wetland. So you, so that could go in a different direction. And in this case here, what the, what the abutter to the project is indicating is that where she didn't have a, a buffer to a wetland. With this replication that's occurring, she will be within a buffer to a wetland.
And then there's actually one more thing. The new replication area came in, um, so there's actually no new replica, no new buffer being introduced to Mr. or Mr. Iello's property. There is an existing wetland where we wanted to put in our replication area that the new environmental consultant came in along with John Rockwell, which, so, Mr. Silva, you've probably seen that. And, uh, our new replication area is actually creating buffer zones within our property only. For the record as well, I just remember that because that was something we went through with, with Conservation.
Okay, so that change would be reflected in the revised plans?
It is reflected on this, on this.
I, I, for the record, and I indicated in my comment, there was, I know that Brookman Row had done the original wetland delineation that was accepted. I have not seen anything from, you say Morrow?
Morrow.
I've never seen anything. There was nothing in the packet that was from Morrow, so I'm not really quite sure the details of what he's speaking about the replication. So please get me, please get me that.
Yeah, we can send, um, your way, yeah. Mr. Morrow was actually there with the, on-site with the peer reviewer, John Rockwell from the NOI. And we can certainly send that in, without an issue.
Would anyone else like to speak? Okay. Any more comments on this on the board?
I just want to make sure, you know, reading the last paragraph of Larry's, there was some, uh, issues reading the plans and that, you know, communication's going to be open between the two of us, so that do we have a mechanism for that, Liz? That they can talk to each other?
Yep, they can, as long as.
There's a lot of information that needs to be.
As long as I am in the loop on that. So if you guys have a meeting, as long as I know so, when I get a bill from Larry, I know what happened.
And any correspondence that goes back and forth. Make sure this has to be covered.
Perfect, yeah.
Right?
Copy it on there.
Yeah, Larry, Larry.
Because Larry doesn't want to be the keeper of the records.
He's the new guy.
Okay.
But very experienced.
Yep.
It just means a whole.
Yeah.
It just means you know.
I just want to make sure that you know the communication needs to be, you know, so we have a clean plan.
Yeah, with Conservation, we've been going back and forth with them. We try to maintain.
There's a lot of issues, yeah.
Yeah, one of the things that I'll note is that there, there seem to be a lot of comments about the infiltration basins and system.
Yeah.
Right? And, and so, um, deficiencies related to those, uh, design changes potentially related to those.
I made some suggestions and then the comments that are in this fire department memo uh, take it even a different direction because they're asking for that area in the cul-de-sac not to be used for the infiltration basin because they want to see that be paved so that they have full access to the circle.
We did that as.
So that's something that, you know, you, you got to give direction as to whether or not he can do that as part of a design to have that full. And then if he does that, he needs to find another place that he's going to be doing that infiltration.
We had one project come through like that. It seemed like an answer, it wasn't as small as this, but it looked like an answer they did in a frustration right in the middle. But it's probably maybe it was the fire department's responding to. That project that has that in there is really difficult for them. Anybody to maneuver around, is it curbs or twenty-two feet apart? If you park on the side, you're done.
I think that was, um, off of Plymouth Street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, this current design has godrails around what I call is a pit. I mean, the thing just goes down. It's, which I, I'm suggesting to you that this, that's not that way to design that.
Saw that.
But, um, even if that comes up to being closer to grave with shallow depression, which chambers under it, uh, that doesn't satisfy what the fire department is saying as far as access. And it's kind of a, it's kind of a delicate thing because you created these bylaws to have the size road that you're saying for this type of a project. So, um, I don't know if the fire department is going a little bit too far with regard to that, or the trucks have gotten bigger since you've done, you know, that, that rules and regs. But it's something it is to can kind of consider in that area. Maybe it's, maybe it's the paved section of the cul-de-sac or the diameter of the cul-de-sac that may have to be considered as a possible amendment in the future when you're looking at that bylaw.
And there's a big difference between Plymouth Street subdivision and a three-lot subdivision that we're talking about here.
But there's not much difference between when you have a fire.
A lot less.
A fire is a fire.
Yeah, and you know what? When push comes to shove, they can be pushed out of the way with them. They have to be.
Yeah, but it just, there is that difference. The fire department is saying, taking them in a certain direction. I'm suggesting them that he has to change that design for other reasons. And, uh, if he's going to come back with a set of plans thinking that he's getting, going in the right direction, we kind of need to know whether or not that fire department comment is going to, you know, trump even what I'm saying and make it such that he can't be using that, that center for some of, you know, so maybe for the conversation with the fire department, I'm not sure.
I can follow up with them tomorrow.
Yeah, I've never heard the fire department ever back down, but, uh, whatever.
And they can pick up anything they want.
Yeah, but, but to Larry's point, if we don't, if we don't get, if we don't.
He could be complying by addressing the issues that I'm saying in that center.
Yeah.
But that will not be satisfying what the fire department is saying.
We're, we're going to, the board's going to have to deal with that um, so as to provide guidance as to what the design's going to look like.
Yeah.
And so that's probably not going to wait until December, to that night, to provide that guidance.
No.
Because it's going to impact the way the, the plan gets submitted.
If we got that back to you in September, I mean, I'm sorry, in early October, would that be sufficient? Or do you need it? No?
As soon as possible, because I haven't seen Larry's comments again, but I know which basin we're talking about. And if we need to redesign that, there are some, if we need to change the location as Larry might have suggested, but if we have to change location, there is significant impact.
For example, the, the cul-de-sac diameter, uh, this design shows a one-side sidewalk, okay, as it comes down to the cul-de-sac. If that's the end of the sidewalk right there and you can use that area that would have been laid out for a sidewalk to ma, basically make the, the paved section a little bit larger and make. make the, the paved section a little bit larger to make sure it satisfies the fire department's journey radius, then maybe that's one possibility. But that's also the areas that they were talking about using for snow storage, and having underground utilities, electrical boxes and so forth, as you know, are going to end up in those areas between lots, right on those property line corners, that's, and that's sort of a conflict where they're saying they're going to do snow storage. So there's a lot of moving parts to try to make a cul-de-sac work in this situation. So all those things just need to be, and that's where you're going to need more time to resolve all those issues, I think, successfully, so we're not kicking this thing down the road each time and not getting to the finish line.
Right.
One way or another, as to whatever-
Right, exactly, exactly, one way or another.
Yeah.
One of the potential area where, where there could be some conflict in the landscaping, so we have our tree canopy bylaw, and, be with me for a second here. Okay, in Larry's comments, page, beginning on page nine, I'm sorry, beginning on page 10, the representative of the Conservation Committee was talking about tree planting in the buffer zone, tree planting in the 0 to 25-foot buffer area can cause impact, the BBW recommend the commission determine that the sum of the tree replanting on site is not practical, and will work with the applicant to determine an acceptable alternative as provided in the tree regulations. So that looks like another one of those areas, and perhaps it's a little bit less impactful, but we could be running into a bit of a conflict between what conservation wants to see happen versus our bylaws on tree canopy.
And I think conservation's tree bylaw is more intensive than the planning boards.
Okay, so, yet again, this board will be asked to, so which way is it going to go?
Yeah.
Much like, much like your earlier question.
He's going to be going to meet with conservation if he's going to hold that meeting with them and get feedback from them, which is, I'm encouraging you to do that-
Yes, I am.
Because otherwise, you're going to be bouncing back and forth.
Yeah, I'm, my, next, next Tuesday, actually, on the 9th, we're meeting with Conservation Commission, we're going to have our arborist, our wetland scientist here, everyone regarding that part of the, you know, Conservation Commission approval, to actually discuss and, and get to a final resolution on how to deal and take care of the trees on the site in accordance with the tree bylaw.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm speaking to the tree.
On the, sorry, for the Conservation Committee, they're going to go back to the May 27th.
Can you get up and use, sorry?
They encouraged the developers to come to the planning board, because they weren't going to approve anything until the plans got finalized with you guys, because that significantly changes where can they plant the trees, and that's when they were strongly advised to revise the project. And so like, as a budding neighbors, like, it's fine, I'll keep showing up, but every time we show up, so we're going to the Conservation Meeting next week to talk about the three houses that we talked about back in May, that they're not going to approve, because they're not going to approve them until they get something solid from you guys, like, what are we doing? Like, it's just-
Well, they never, from the Conservation Commission, never sent me an email saying, hi, we're sending him back to the planning board, because-
But I'm just saying, as a budding neighbors, next week we'll go to the meeting, but I already foresee nothing's going to happen, because they're not going to approve anything until the fire, and I actually went back and watched the meeting, the fire department made the comment, May 27th, weight capacity, fire with circle, wetland crossing, all of those comments were addressed in May and not revised in the June, so are all of these comments being taken seriously? Like, nothing seems to be revised, so that's just-
Yeah, no, they can't move forward.
No, I know.
They don't want to speak on behalf of the board, but-
And they had formally asked you, did we get those comments from the fire department? And they made them, it's on the YouTube video, the fire department commented.
But I never got anything from conservation.
No, I know, I'm not saying-
What she's saying is they got them directly-
They got them directly, they got them, okay.
I'm not saying anything to the fault, I appreciate everything you guys are doing, I'm saying they were aware of that, resubmitted plans in June that did not address those comments.
One of the key comments that I also listed in there was that they need to itemize out where they're looking for waivers from strict compliance.
Yeah.
Because the board has to vote on those waivers, independent, you know, and those need to be spelled out.
Right.
So where they're not meeting the letter of the law as to what's in your bylaws, and they're asking for you to give them some relief, you need to be able to vote on each one of those things.
Absolutely, yep.
Liz?
Yeah.
Or Bruce, could one of us, someone, anyone from the board, just communicate to the Conservation Chairperson that they have requested to continue until December 1st?
I will do that, I was going to follow with the, I didn't know if somebody was going to send, if they were, somebody was coming tonight or not, but I will send their chairperson a copy of Larry's letter with the information that it's been continued till December 1st.
Well, it's, it's pretty obvious, there's a lot of hurdles too, so hopefully the communication part, like I said, between Larry and you can work this out.
We understand this is a sensitive site, you know, we have a pond in our back, we have wetland crossing, you know, it's a sensitive site, and especially when you have tree bylaws from planning board, tree bylaws from Conservation Commission, you know, the width of a driveway, the width of the roadway, you know, not being allowed by the fire department, but being allowed by the zoning bylaw, so that creates, you know, moving parks so that everyone can come into accordance, and that takes, that takes some time. You know, we were reviewing the peer review NOI's comments that he had, and that took us some time, we had to meet on site, we had to, we actually, on our own, the developer paid for it, he had to get an arborist on site, we wanted to do that to be proactive, so we are engaging, we are taking care of the comments as they arise.
Can I say something on this?
My name is Henry Sardiano, I live at 78 Linnwood Street, so I have bought the back of my property, but it's their property. He just got done saying they realize it's a sensitive site, they started this with trying to put five houses in this, okay, so I, I tend to agree with her, this is just a come-in, build them, flip them, and go. Every time they get called out on something, and I can constantly go to these meetings, they go back and revise the plan. So in other words, they try to get things through, but when they get called out on them again, then they go back and say, oh, we'll take care of that. So you've got to be very, very careful with these guys on what they're trying to do here, that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Need a motion to continue to December meeting?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll see the proponent, can you guys back on the seat first?
And you guys will get notified again around Thanksgiving time, so don't ignore the planning letter.
Thanks for coming.
And if you guys want a copy of the review letter that we received from our engineer, just shoot me an email and I'll send it to you tomorrow.
I actually would love that.
Okay.
I'm not there, so I just like to-
Yep.
I agree with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, thanks, sir.
It's a lot easier to say. Thanks, Larry.
Yeah, thank you, Larry.
I might see if I can, you guys can call the proponent for me, maybe before you settle down.
That's a good suggestion.
All right, thank you.
Liz, if there is anything, I believe Eduardo has been on his head.
Yep.
If there's anything you need from us, like from the day that you're following?
Okay, I prefer to do things in detail, and then there's always a paper trail-
Perfect, yeah.
-as to what our conversation was, yep, that's fine.
If you-
Yeah, he was wanting to bring in a landscape plan or nothing, I don't know about that.
Yeah, we had a-
This is, this is just signature verification.
We did try to contact the fire department, we would love to have a meeting-
I just sent that to Larry.
Between us.
I'm going to try to work out a meeting with the tree.
That would be great, because then if there is things that we can do and move things along.
Yep.
Because I would love to get at least Larry's, like, a month, for him to review the plans, as well as Conservation Commission a month, and that, a month is worth of everyone's time to review something, so that's what I'm trying to do.
As much time as we can get for that turnaround, back and forth.
Yes.
Because I, I think we all appreciate the fact that these things take time.
Yes, unfortunately, the, you know, the, the neighbors are concerned, I understand that, when I wanted to bring it up, and I have to, I mean, I don't even know if we can still speak, but the, the property, our property is the lowest point possible of all the abutters, so if they're concerned, they are concerned about stormwater and Conservation Commission, I spoke to them and said, the pond is the lowest point, everything from everywhere else is coming to our property, all the abutters, and going down the pond, nothing we do with our grading is going to impact up there, right? And that's something I wanted to, once we do speak of that on the Conservation Commission or on the next planning board hearing, I would, I would like to have Larry to understand that, and I could speak to Larry about that as well, so that hopefully we can alleviate some of the problems that the abutters are having by me saying, and as well as another peer reviewer professional stating something in this, in this area.
And I think that, you know, earlier we were talking about all the comments related to infiltration and sedimentation basins.
Yes.
And, and for the, for exactly the reason that you're describing.
Yes.
That's why those topics are so very important.
I understand, those are very important.
Because they're going to, they're going to be handling a lot of the fault.
Yes, yes, yes.
And so if Larry's got concerns about the way that they're constructed, or the way that they operate, those are very important.
Yeah, Carlos and I, yeah, Carlos and I were talking about it, we said, even if, in the, in the crazy world, if we just put this pavement driveway in, of course we can, right, of course the water has to be treated, the water would never flow the pattern that would invade them, because the water always flows to the pond, so in the, in the topography, if you look at the topography of the land and the abutters around us, they're all higher than us, so all the water is going to the pond, and it will always flow to the pond, right? That's something that, it's hard to, it's hard for them to understand, and I completely understand, we'll, we'll make it through, you know, but I appreciate, Liz, it's been great, thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thank you, John.
See you guys later.
Okay, all right, next item on the agenda is we're going to vote to endorse the updated open space and recreation plan, so we got this a long time ago, and, has everyone had a chance to read this and go through it?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Any comments at all?
Where is it?
Is the open space here, the open space and recreation.
Did we get the, what did we get for?
This was the plan that we talked about in our last meeting, the selectmen had seen it and approved it, and we were kind of beginning to go through it.
We had a lot of questions on it, so Liz gave us a chance to make any comments, apparently nobody made any comments.
No, I, I got overwhelmingly distracted and I didn't submit anything.
Okay.
It's my fault.
Okay, well, since there weren't any comments, and seems good, would someone like to make a motion to?
I'll make the motion.
Endorse the open space, right? Will I make a motion? Second?
Second.
All, a motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great.
Okay.
Okay, so, let's see.
You want to go back and quickly do the ZBA agenda?
Yeah, let's, let's do this, ZBA agenda for September 11th, Abington Investments, is that one of them?
It is. So that is the Form A that you did tonight, they're going to zoning to reconfigure that lot, that's frontage on High Street, for a second house lot.
Okay.
Which is kind of what Sean explained tonight, that they, they got to go to zoning for some relief.
Do you have any background on 267 North Quincy, the latest on that?
They're appealing a zoning enforcement officer decision, so I think what that is, is that somebody who worked in that, in the zoning enforcement department before, gave permission for a temporary trailer, and the temporary trailer has stayed, so-
Temporary trailer is a temporary?
It's not temporary, so the zoning enforcement officer has, to my knowledge, said it's not temporary and you need to do something, so I think this is the first step in maybe building a permanent structure.
Okay.
I think.
For 336 Washington Street?
Yes.
I would just strongly, strongly recommend that they consider, I don't know if they have the permit before us at any point, I don't-
Not that I'm aware of.
Strongly encourage ZBA to consider screening, lots and lots of screening landscaping.
Mm-hmm.
It's an eyesore now, and if they start storing stuff like this, it's just going to look worse.
So I guess it's already there.
Yeah, yeah, but this is the, the only chance they'll have to say no, put some screening up.
Right, okay, is everybody in favor of that, that I send that off to the ZBA?
Oh, uh, never mind. I didn't know if the 20-foot buffer between residential and commercial would come into play, but it's pre-existing, so no, probably wouldn't.
Okay.
But I would strongly encourage them to consider it.
All right, I will send that off to them tomorrow.
Any else? Okay, about Gordon Circle roadway except-
So, everybody jumping the wayback machine, for, for those of you who were here 20 years ago.
I was.
Gordon Circle is a two-lot subdivision off of Lincoln Street, it's very close to, I was going to say the new subdivision, but that, that's, what is that, Presidential? No, Presidential's off a different street, sorry, so anyway, the developer who built it, his name is slipping through my head right now, came into the office and he's trying to get his surety released, he had a bond, and his bank wants to, wants the bond back.
It's been sitting there for how long?
20 years.
Oh my gosh.
Well, he hasn't come in for his interest?
No, because it's a bond, not cash, so, I said, well, you'll need to get me an Aspil plan, let's start there, and he actually had them, he came back the same day with the Aspil plan, and, and then he said, oh, and I never intended to, I always intended for the town to take this, and I'm like, hmm, well, hold on, let me see how we do that. So I, my first stop was the DPW, and John Stone, who said that he really wouldn't mind because it's a two-lot subdivision and the road's in decent shape and et cetera, et cetera. I then reached out to Town Council about our stormwater bylaw to see if they needed to comply with that, so 20 years later, and she said, there is no requirement in the general laws that these roads comply with stormwater bylaws, if however, the town's street acceptance bylaws and/or the street acceptance policy requires compliance with stormwater regulations, the town may require the same here, or waive such a requirement if warranted. I need to check our street acceptance policy, I don't think it's in there, and it's definitely not in any of our stormwater regulations that I remember. Again, I checked with John, he hasn't had any stormwater problems up there, he did say, though, if he would like any detention basins or any of that stuff cleaned before we take the road.
This is really way back, because we always had a lot of, historically on this board, about street- This is really Wayback, cause we always had a lot of, historically on this board, about street acceptance and things dragging out and stuff like that, so wow.
Sounds familiar.
Yeah.
So, um, this is kind of just, I'm letting you know it's coming. Um, I'll definitely check the, um, street acceptance policy, and if there's nothing in there, um, then I guess the only thing I would ask him to do, if it's okay with the board, would be to, uh, do what John Stone suggests and to clean out the detention basins, maybe sweep the road, whatever John wants, before we take it.
So we talk about this at the next meeting?
Um, I'll put it on for the next meeting with the street acceptance policy, so we can make a final determination.
Could you put on the next meeting agenda Crabtree as well?
So, Crab-
Crabtree?
Crabtree Lane Extension, you mean?
Yeah, how it never got approved.
Okay.
Because we got it approved but never got filed.
Correct. Well, I, I actually have an email out to council.
Okay.
Because there's somebody who wants to build a road off a road off a road.
Nope.
So I'm like, I just don't know where, how to, how to address that at all, so, um, I meant to do that today, but it was a little crazy in our office today, um.
Does a acceptance have to go to Town Meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, approved it, but they never filed the paperwork.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be on Sunday.
So, he can ask, he can provide the ASBIL, we can take John's recommendation, but at the end of the day, it's gonna, it's gonna go back to Town Meeting for-
Right, right.
Yeah, okay.
So when the warrant opens, he'll have to have a petition article, and I did say that to him, I said, did you reserve the fee in the road? Cause if not, we're gonna have some issues.
Okay.
He said he did, so I did, I went-
That was when Sean first discovered that part in the, in the law.
The fee in the road thing, yeah.
Sean, we're talking about a street acceptance, I know you're a big guy on that stuff. Does that sound familiar to you at all?
It's not yours.
Gordon Circle Roadway, that one of yours?
Probably this one.
Yeah.
Not mine.
Not yours.
Alright, now we're, come to the highlight of the meeting.
Right, Town Planner Update?
Town Planner Update.
Okay, so, very quickly, I believe this is why Mr. Riley is back.
He had visuals? Does he have visuals? Cause I'm not sure.
Let's turn on the whiteboard. Um, I've received an email from Attorney Riley on behalf of his client, um, Len Pointe, who, he's requesting to postpone sidewalk construction for one ninety-eight slash one eighty-six Center Ave. The reason being is that we have applied for a grant to repave and, um, and put new sidewalks in from the railroad tracks down to, I think, it's above Island Grove Spencer's Pizza. In that, in that general vicinity, which would include where this, um, where the work would be done. He's asking, uh, we'll find out, I'm hoping October, November, but then it will be too late to do that work. He would like to avoid spending the time and money on our sidewalk if the state intends to remove them, um. Uh, they, he's, instead, we propose not to, to not install the ADA tactile pads, new radial grinner curving unless, and until the town is informed that it will not be restating, not be receiving state grant funding for this desired roadway improvement project. We would proceed with our required reconstruction of the Quincy Street sidewalk, and we would proceed with the filing of our ASBIL plan in order to obtain our occupancy permit. If your office agrees that our request is reasonable, we would ask that the Planning Board confirm if they agree to our proposed postponement of the Center Avenue sidewalk improvements as described above, and that the board would sign off on our occupancy permit upon its acceptance of an ASBIL plan without the completion of the extra Center Ave driveway sidewalk work. So it is, um, they will hold off until next year if we do not get the grant funding, and if we do get the grant funding, then they would not be responsible to install the tactile pads or reconstruct the sidewalk.
Sean, I don't know if I can watch the street, and just to be clear, it's, the sidewalk is constructed and the Quincy Street sidewalk's constructed, we're only talking about the driveway entrance off of Center Ave, and I brought visuals.
Oh, Jack!
I just need one for a file.
So, the, the current driveway and sidewalk is, you know, in place, it's safe, it's basically matches everything else on the street. It's just, it, I was talking to Liz about it, like, just seems like an awful waste of money to go put in something the state's gonna rip out. So we, they, LePointe's put it back, um, to what it, you know, matches everything else, it's fully safe, it's got the ramps in, everything's in place. Um, and they, uh, wanna put in their ASBIL plan so they get their occupancy permit, but if the grant doesn't pass, then they would go back and put in the tactile pads on their own. Okay, so, um, just an unusual situation, cause the grant is pending.
Just glad it's done and that fence is taken down around that side.
Yeah, all the shrubs and trees are in, maple trees and, um, maiden airs and the cypress trees and shrubs. And they have the base coat, everything's done, kind of the top coat of pavement, which they wanted to know how you, they should proceed with the driveway threshold. And then they can submit their, um, ASBIL.
Well, people always comment to me, that thing is amazingly close to the street.
I'm glad you brought that up, cause I've had questions, how did LePointe get that? And, and for anyone who wants to know, that's what the current zoning in that district requires, is that all new buildings must be within ten feet of the street. Designed to give essentially pedestrian access to the train station, and the parking goes to the rear. So there was no special treatment by the Planning Board or the zoning board, uh, in that regard.
Yeah, you don't have to tell the Planning Board that. We're, we're well aware.
That's only amendment happened, really, when they, uh, when they built Abbot and Bag, and it tore down those beautiful, all the stores are right on the sidewalk, and then they put in a drive-through. But that's where, I remember that coming from that, is that we gotta stock up.
Yes, as a chairman of this board and longtime member, my wife says, how did you guys approve that?
Bless me, I think we've all heard the comments.
That's the trades-oriented development. So that's, when we heard about this grant, we were like, let me put this in writing, give it to the board to make the decision. It seemed to be efficient and reasonable, but it's clearly up to the board. The picture shows that there is a safe sidewalk and driveway in place.
How many units were in there, Sean?
I don't even know, I think it's eight.
Eight.
Eight one bedrooms?
Yeah.
So, questions, so we have the situation you described outlined in Sean's email. What's gonna happen if the grant is approved, what's gonna happen if the grant is not approved?
If the grant is not approved, then they will come back.
Right, right, so he kind of laid all of that out.
Yep.
So that, in some form or fashion, has to become an official agreement between us. Does that email constitute an official agreement, or do we have to revisit the plan in some fashion? Or is there some other way that we, we take what was in the email and make it part of a recording or something, so that there's a record of it beyond your email?
Would it be the vote?
I don't know.
I would think that would-
I would suggest two things, I don't think it has to be so far as to record it, cause then you wanna see something filed later that it complies, so I would think, I would say, if you vote tonight to allow us to proceed with the ASBIL plan with the driveway as is, um, we would submit the ASBIL plan, which you guys would then review also. You're, uh, and at that point in time, I think what I could do is take that email and put it into an agreement to be signed by myself and the Chairman of the Board, or whoever you want.
Sure.
Okay.
If you give us that vote tonight, that's the direction we would head.
Yeah, and in my mind, that would be sufficient to kind of formalize what you've outlined.
I'm, I'm not gonna come back here, you know, without keeping you guys happy, so, happy to do that.
So, let's just play this out hypothetically, we wait, when are you going for occupancy? Soon, I would imagine.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't been in the building, so I'm assuming it's ninety-five percent done.
Yeah, it's close.
So, I was, we're, I mean, September second, I'm assuming they get the ASBIL, they submit it, and while they're doing that, they're probably applying for the occupancy permit, so while reviewing that.
But there's a chance that you'll be requiring, requesting the occupancy permit before we hear about the grant?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So hypothetically, what is the mechanism to make sure that if we do not get the grant, that you then come back in the spring or summer and finish that?
That's this written agreement that we would submit as part of our ASBIL plan submission. And, you know, you can edit it any way you want. So if it, play that out, we don't put in our tactile pads and curbing and everything now per our approved plan. We get our ASBIL submitted as is, we get the occupancy permit as is, the grant then gets denied. We're required, and we'll put this in writings, you know, basically similar to that email, to come back, which would likely be in the spring now, cause the ASBIL plan's since let's shut, shut down to complete that work. So I would anticipate part of that agreement that I would submit would say something like that, and the work to be completed by June first.
And that we can hold on to the bond.
Yeah.
Until that's, we can do that too, we're holding sure.
Some portion of the bond, yeah.
Well, it's-
Okay.
I don't even know how much it is now. Yeah.
But it's a bond, not cash.
Yeah.
So.
We're not going anywhere.
Understand, understand, it's just that-
They're not going anywhere.
It's, it's a very reasonable set of circumstances you're outlining, it's just, it's, it's just the, the discussion's kind of-
Yeah, I wanna cover your butt and my butt, so that it's in writing.
Yep.
No objection to that whatsoever, so it's not special treatment, it's just unique circumstances, um, so we'll document that. But really what they wanna know is, can we move forward with the ASBIL as, as is? And that won't hold up the approval of the ASBIL, because we don't know exactly when we'll hear from the bond guys.
Well, I'm in favor of that.
Yeah.
Alright. Can't they ask me if I'm gonna be on for some process?
Little late.
Blew that down. Anyway, anybody else wanna talk about anything else tonight?
Do we need to-
Did we do a motion?
Some sort of a motion for that, or make, make that motion?
Okay, sure.
So that's gonna be to approve the request outlined in Sean's August eighteenth email?
Yes.
To allow the submittal of the ASBIL plan in accordance with that email.
Yeah.
Pending-
And together with a written agreement to be signed by the Chairman and the petitioner, whether it's me or Mrs. LePointe.
At the time the ASBIL is submitted.
Yes, yeah.
Alright, so the motion's been made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, uh, do I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone, thanks for watching.